The meeting of the Gainesville City, this workshop of the Gainesville City Commission to order. Today is Monday, February 27th. It is 1:00. We'll make a couple of statements before we take a motion to adopt the agenda. We are, we're going to do, one item is on the agenda today. That will be a recap of the outcome of the Joint Legislative Audit Committee from last week. And with the city manager and general manager, the utility and I, will give you some updates on that. And essentially what we will do after we adopt the agenda, assuming that it's adopted as written, is I will recognize Chair of the Joint Legislative Audit Committee, Representative Mike Caruso, who is joining us via Zoom. He has a couple of things to say to us. And then I will go through a, just a brief presentation to kind of get us all on the same page and talk about exactly where we are and some of the dates to recognize moving forward. And to kind of center us, hopefully. And from there, I will ask the general manager and the city manager to just say a few words each. Not a long presentation from them, but just a few words each. And following that, I will ask commissioners to make a first round of comments. Then we will ask the public for comments. Following that, we'll go back to the commission. And then we will finish the item and have member comment and adjourn. If you would like to speak, if you're here from the public and you would like to speak, please fill out a speaker card so that the clerk has ready access to the list of speakers. And we will move forward in that manner. So, thank you all for joining us. Let me get a motion to adopt the agenda, please. We have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Yes, sir. Commissioner Buck.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, for calling the meeting. And I saw that over the weekend. I appreciate that. I thought, based on the fact that we have the state and that we heard from the state legislative, the JLLAC, on Thursday, it was a good move. So, I appreciate that. I would like to consider adopting the agenda with a modification that we allow some public comment. I think this is an incredible, this is a topic of some significant weight. And we benefit from hearing some constructive information from looking forward.
We will hear public comment. First, we'll hear a couple of presentations and discussions and then all of us.
But that's not currently listed on the agenda.
You're correct, because we don't list it for items. We take it. We do it.
So, then my understanding is we will have probably up to, perhaps less than 30 minutes of public comment.
It's, there's no end on it unless you all want to place a limit on it. I mean, for items on an agenda, we don't normally limit to a specific period of time.
I just knew this was a budget workshop. Typically, a budget workshop does not lend itself to, obviously, taking action, according to city attorneys. So, I wanted to make sure we had the opportunity here.
We.
I appreciate that.
Absolutely. We'll take public comment, yes.
Thank you, thank you.
That's why I asked everybody for their comment cards. So, let's make sure we do that and we will move forward with that. All right. Any other comments, commissioners? Commissioner Tusk, then.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This one, I want to clarify a point of the workshops. In the workshop, are we allowed to make motions?
No.
Okay. That's what I want to clarify. Thank you.
You're welcome.
We can make comments.
Correct, yeah. We have lots of discussion, just, and give, staff will understand what we're looking for when we're done, I'm sure. So, okay. All in favor? Aye. Many opposed. All right. We have an agenda. Representative Caruso, you are with us. Your mic is also.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor.
Good afternoon. Do you want to make some comments? Yes, sir. We can hear you now.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for allowing me to speak today. I appreciate, I just wanted to start out, I appreciate everybody being there today. I appreciate you all coming up to Tallahassee and giving us your insight into the issues that we're talking about. And most importantly, I appreciate that you've realized that this is a grave situation and that it, and we had spoke up in Tallahassee about getting together in May, but moving it up to today certainly sends the right signal to Tallahassee. So, I just wanted to say thank you for that. You know, I won't get into the issues because I think they're well-known. And what some of the things we'd like you to do, you know, to look at today is stopping the sweep of general, of GRU funds to general revenue, working on, at the same time, controlling rates, reliable power service, work on reducing the debt, have a long-term plan for reducing the $1.7 billion of debt that the GRU has. And of course, reducing the deferred maintenance that is inherent in what's been going on there. So, you know, I, I don't want, I know the workshop, you've got, you know, you've got a time limit here. I just wanted to say that I hope that you're sincere in your actions today. I hope you take bold actions, work on bold actions, bold modifications to what is transpiring now. You know, we will reconvene, I think, back in November this coming year. We're going to reconvene at the JLLAC, the Joint Legislative Audit Committee. I look forward to seeing you all up there. And I hope that by then, when we get back, that, you know, we are well on our way to resolving this situation with the GRU. I think that, and accordingly, I hope that you do make the bold actions today. I know that there are other, other, I believe Chair Pizzo is also watching here today. And we are looking to your actions today as to how we go forward in the future. So, thank you again. Good, have a good workshop here and I will be watching. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So, as I noted, I'm going to go ahead and just run through a few slides here. It's a brief presentation. And before I forget, I will let you know that Jay Glover, our financial advisor from PFM, is also joining us, as is Ryan Matthews, with Gray Robinson, who is kind of our lead helper in Tallahassee. So, without any further ado, we do have a path that we must create ahead. Things are a little different than anyone would like them to be. And we're going to find a way to create a better path. I'm committed to doing that. I know all my colleagues and our charter officers and staff are as well. The point today is to allow us to talk about what we talked about with the legislature on Thursday, or members of the legislature this past Thursday, and for all of you to be, my colleagues, to be able to ask questions and then hear from some of our neighbors. So, let's see. I have not had the pleasure of using this. There we go. "The Gainesville City Commission and our charter officers continue to take this legislative audit and directions from the Joint Legislative Audit Committee and its members very seriously. We are actively engaged in and deeply committed to solving these issues and creating a bold, responsive path forward for our neighbors." Just a few of the prior dates on the timeline that have already passed to give you a little bit of context. November of 2019, JLLAC, the Joint Legislative Audit Committee, I'll use that acronym. I hope that it doesn't throw anybody off, notifies city of audit to be engaged. November of 2021, the initial audit findings were supplied to the city. January of '22, the city provided management responses under Mayor Lauren Poe's signature. 2022, throughout the year, the city rebuilt our general government finance department. We filed reports on a timely basis and have gotten caught up on most of the auditor's findings. February 9th, 2023, Moody's reaffirmed GRU's bond rating. February 13th, 2023, JLLAC requested that I attend their committee meeting, which was held last week. And I indicated that I wanted to bring several staff members with me so that we could answer as many questions as possible, as thoroughly as possible, and at least understand exactly what needed to happen going forward. So, February 23rd, I, the city manager, the GRU manager, met with JLLAC alternate chairs, Representative Caruso and Senator Jason Pizzo, as well as Senators Jason Broder and Senator Tracy Davis, and Representatives Christopher Benjamin and Diane Hart, all of whom serve on that committee. Before the committee meeting, we went up in plenty of time to be able to sit down in their offices. And I appreciate them giving us a few minutes to be able to do that. Later in the day, of course, we attended the meeting itself. Most of the charter officers were there, as well as some senior staff, again, so that we could answer questions in as broad a manner as possible and be able to get back with specifics as quickly as possible. The general audit findings group into three categories. Number one, the GRU debt levels, the general fund transfer and indirect cost allocation plan were findings one through three. Those findings are still in process and they're really what we're going to talk about today. That's why those are in bold. They're the primary focus of the JLLAC. Items four through eight were the Reckord House Youth Academy findings. Those are substantially closed and will be entirely completed by June of '23. And I want to commend staff for being able to move forward with that and look forward to how we can continue to move forward in a good way with Reckord House. Findings nine through 18 were a variety of administration and management findings. And those are either completed and closed already or will be by June of 2023. The primary directions from JLLAC regarding GRU debt and the general fund transfer really falls into four categories. These are how they want us to think about this. And several of you here were in that room and many others watched. So, this is not a surprise, I don't think, to anyone, but it's important to say all this out loud. Number one, significantly reduce utility debt. Currently, we have approximately $1.7 billion of utility debt. 1.2 billion of that is in the electric utility. And the lion's share of that, it corrects, connects, rather, to the biomass plant and moving forward from that. Number two, significantly reduce or end the general fund transfer, as Representative Caruso was just discussing. Number three, reduce general government spending and expenses. I mean, that's clearly outflow from number two. And again, it's a direct request from the committee. Number four, potentially increase general government millage rate so that we can continue to provide services. Again, that came directly from several members of the committee and it's just part of the process. Here's what the calendar looks like going forward. On March 23rd, April 24th, May 15th, May 22nd, we will have GRU budget workshops. Some of those will be very technical in nature, some of them will be more an opportunity to have some discussions. On May 17th, June 14th, August 23rd, we will have general government budget workshops. Again, some of those are technical in nature, some of them are more discussion-oriented. May 31st, we'll have an actual meeting to vote on GRU rates and tier structures for fiscal year '24. That's a meeting and all the rules of a regular meeting apply. July 20th, general government fiscal year '24 maximum millage rate and preliminary fire assessment rate will be set by the commission. That's the maximum that we'll be able to do. It's not definitely what it will be, but we'll have to vote on what the maximum is. And several of you have not been through that process before, so that is not when we set the final millage rate. That is setting a ceiling for it. Same with fire assessment. July and August of 2023, the state auditor will re-engage and begin onsite work. September 7th, 2023, is the first public hearing to vote on the ordinances for the fiscal year 2024 financial and operating plan for both general government and the utilities. September 21st, 2023, the second reading of that same set of ordinances. Early fall of 2023, which apparently it sounds like no later than November, we'll hear report back to JLLAC and we'll be invited up for that. October 1st, 2023, is when we promised we would have the city's plan back to JLLAC and available. It will be available prior to that because we will have voted on it in September. And it'll be pretty obvious the direction we're heading prior, far prior to that. All these budget workshops are things we would do anyway. We just have a different set of guidelines moving forward that inform the process. We offered October 1st and they accepted it as the deadline to report back, again, because everything is already figured out at that point. And we know what's expected of us and we know what the dates are going forward. As of right now, the mayor and the city commission, city manager Curry, general manager Cunningham, and all our staff are listening to our neighbors' concerns. We hear you, not only today, but in the community as we move forward. City manager Curry and general manager Cunningham are researching and testing potential solutions and working with senior staff to create options. They will coordinate and consult with the mayor and the commissioners individually, as well as all those meetings we just went through. The mayor and the charter officers and staff are coordinating to return written answers to questions posed by JLLAC members last week. The mayor and the charter officers and staff will maintain open lines of communication with JLLAC members. We have each other's phone numbers. We'll definitely be in touch. The mayor and the city commission will be here regular updates on progress and we will report that back to you on a consistent basis. This is something everybody needs to understand very, very clearly. Not only up here, but throughout our staff and throughout our community. The city of Gainesville will continue to provide excellent service to our neighbors and support for community builders, for our staff. The business of the city, both from general government and GRU, goes on as it must go on as the city commission works through these very serious issues and creates a bold, responsive path forward for us all. I'm going to leave that up because it's important that everyone hear that and understand what we're talking about. We do have very serious issues to do, but we cannot put fire trucks and police cars and parks and everything that we do as a city on hold while we do that. We will continue to administer the affairs of the city, both for our neighbors to serve and for our community builders, our staff, our workers, as we move forward. So, with all that said, manager Curry, did you want to make just a couple of comments there? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the commission. I too want to thank the Joint Legislative Audit Committee for the invitation to come up and provide feedback on the 18 findings that were disclosed back in January. While we were in Tallahassee last Thursday, as we met individually with members of the legislature on that committee, we were asked some questions that may have fallen a little bit outside of those 18 disclosed findings. And under your signature, Mr. Mayor, we will be responding to those. They included how we were spending our ARPA funds relative to housing. They addressed concerns around the block center and building fees that were charged. And there was a concern about how the city was moving forward with our GCRA, the community reinvestment area. As it is now, City Department, as we all know, we wanted to make sure that, in particular, Representative Hart, who asked the question, knows that we are in fact moving forward with that, even though it is not under the state requirements for a CRA. So, we're doing that. I also wanted to say that in the early 2000s, I was actually appointed by Governor Charles to serve on the state oversight board for the city of Miami. I understand how important it is to be responsive to the Joint Legislative Audit Committee. And in fact, as city manager, I will do that on behalf of this commission. I also wanted to state the fact that our budget process is already in process. It started back in early February, late January, early February. We are approaching the budget this year. It is my first year of actually actually going through that process from beginning to end, hopefully. That we will approach it from a zero budgeting strategy. We will start from scratch and build the budgets up. We will leave no stone unturned. We will look at all of the levers that could potentially be pulled to make sure that we are in fact providing those services that this commission wants provided to the citizens of the city of Gainesville. We will go through that process. Prior to those budgets being submitted to me for review, I have put together a continuous improvement process task force that will be comprised of some staff who will be looking, taking a look at those budgets prior to my review to make sure that we have in fact left no stone unturned in terms of making sure that we have budgets that are built based on our needs. We will not be starting a budget review based on what we had in the current year and building on top of that. We will start, and I reiterate, on a zero-based, from a zero-based approach. That budget process will end, of course, in a recommendation from the city manager relative to general government, to this commission. We will have several options that we would have reviewed and tested, but only one recommendation will come to the commission. Clearly, that recommendation will be built on conversations individually and of course, conversations that will come out of the workshops that will be held by the commission. But there will be a recommendation from the manager to the commission and of course, the decision is yours in terms of how you would like to move that decision to its finality. And with that, again, we are prepared to make sure that we are ready for the state auditor general when he comes back or when that office comes back in late July, early August. I did speak with Mr. Noonan briefly. He mentioned that they will be doing some preliminary work in the month of July and would be on the ground here in August. We don't expect for that to be a happy and pleasant process. Auditting processes are not happy and pleasant, but we will be hopefully prepared for that. And with that, I yield to the general manager.
So, before I recognize general manager, I want you all to know that the manager, the city manager's senior staff spent all day Friday. I was with them when they started. They started understanding all of this on Friday. They did not let any grass grow. They got after it immediately. And they are to be commended for still getting their work done and managing to put this on top of all of that. So, I wanted to mention that. And the same is true of GRU senior staff. They are not letting any grass grow here. This is, this is happening moving forward. We are, we are working and we, the commission, are staying out of that day-to-day, minute-to-minute. I did go make a greeting to general government staff, but we provide broad policy. And I think we'll have some specific broad policy today and certainly in the weeks going forward. But staff is working hard. I don't want anybody to think that they are not already on top of this. General manager, come here.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, commissioners, I won't repeat most of what Ms. Curry said in terms of appreciating the feedback from JLLAC, us going up there, hearing from that. With that being said, these are very real, very serious issues and concerns. And as you stated, our staff started on Friday and have been working through the weekend into today and really look, this will be throughout the whole budget season, as Ms. Curry mentioned. We are, these are issues, the two main findings at GRU are not a surprise to anyone, the debt level and the GFT. But there are also issues that we have been executing on and have had a plan. What we heard at JLLAC from their, from them is that plan is not bold enough or not drastic enough. And so, we're stepping back to reevaluate that plan as well as looking at anything, kind of as Ms. Curry mentioned, every stone to look, turn over, evaluate, look at different ways that we do things, look at ways to increase revenues, reduce expenses, and look at these different plans. And so, we are, essentially what we're doing is putting together a focused team that is going to be, this is going to be one of their primary responsibilities this year, is to develop that plan and strategy going forward. It started on Friday, but it's going to be over the next several months. I do want to touch on a couple of things that I think are critically important and they don't downplay any of this work that we're doing. But as you mentioned, Mr. Mayor, we have to continue to provide utility services and do that well. We have a highly competent staff that works 24/7, 365 to provide those utility services and they will continue to do that during this season. And in addition to that, we will be working this problem as we continue to try to find solutions. With that said, today, we are really here to listen to the city commission and listen to the public as we continue to develop solutions going forward. So, I don't want to repeat some of the other things that have been said already. Those are my additional comments. So, thank you and we're ready to listen and keep going, keep working the issue.
Thank you. So, I want to remind everyone that we do have standing by, at least for the next hour, our representative from PFM, our financial advisor. And also, we have our lead lobbyist, Ryan Matthews, is available as well. They're on Zoom if you have questions of them at any point. Yeah, so let's go ahead and start recognizing commissioners. Commissioner Tusk, then.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I want to thank our local delegation, Senators Perry and Bradley, Speaker Pro Tem Clemens, and Representative Henson for attending the JLLAC meeting. Thank you to committee chair Senator Pizzo and Representative Caruso. I want them to know that we heard them, we respect their comments. And as a former member of the legislature and chair of the House Education Committee, I understand quite clearly. One thing that was concerning to me were the comments from citizens who testified. And they testified about how they were treated or how they felt when speaking before us. So, I think it is clear we need a kinder, gentler commission in working with our neighbors from both the commission and staff. I think Maya Angelou said it best. I've learned that people forget what you say, what you, they forget what you did. People will forget what you, what you did, but people will never forget how you made them feel. So, we must be ever, ever mindful. Now, I've got some comments I'd like to make. I think as we move through this process, we're going to be asking our charter officers, staff, and citizens to make this journey with us and as we reduce costs. And I believe that the commission must set the example. And in setting that example, I believe the commission should start first in having the attorney repeal the commissioner's salary ordinance, which is ordinance number 2022-758. That ordinance would negate the salary increase slated for October 1 and in the October 1 budget, but would have been implemented in January of 2024. And it would maintain our salaries at the current level of, I think, it's 40,000 for commissioners and 50,000 for the mayor.
It's about 51.
About 51. But it would maintain our current salaries. That's one. Secondly, I think that the commission should ask all seven charter officers to make significant budget cuts in their, reductions in their budget and return to the commission in four weeks. I believe we have to move up with a much more accelerated schedule than what we've presented, but to wait until May, I think it's not fast enough, in my opinion. The commission directs all seven charter officers to implement a hiring freeze immediately. The commission directs the attorney to hold execution of the solar energy contract with Orge, is it Origins? Thank you. An abeyance and return the contract to the commission for further discussion and review. I am very, very afraid of a biomass, too. The commission directs the managers of GRU and general government to review duplications of services and where possible, look at consolidation of services. I'm looking ultimately at really consolidating the GRU under general government. That's my, that is my thought process. I think we should look at a third party to come in and to help assist in looking at that. And then Senator Pizzo and Representative Caruso stated that the legislature could offer resources to assist us. I would ask them to give consideration to the following. The University of Florida buys power from a private vendor and not GRU, while Florida State University, Florida A&amp;M University, and Tallahassee Community College all purchase services from Tallahassee utilities. I would like for the, I would like for them to speak on our behalf with the University of Florida. of Florida to let them know we want to be their customer, we want to earn their, earn the right as their customer, but we would accept a payment in lieu of taxes if we don't, if they're not going to be our customer. I don't think it's fair for Tallahassee to be able to maintain their utility and have the participation of their utility company. And we are, we are very similar cities, Tallahassee and Gainesville. And so I think that perhaps they would have, they would be able to assist us in having J-LAC look at how the university could make a payment in lieu of taxes or look at eventually becoming our customer. I know this would not be immediate, but I think it needs to be done. Then I would also finally give some thought to ending the, definitely ending the transfer of the $2 million this year and going forward, but to look at bonding opportunities for those dollars. So, and I know finally, after we've exhausted all, all other things, we're going to have to probably look at a possible ad valorem tax increase. That completes my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. And I would say, let's go ahead, Madam Clerk, and add an item on this Thursday's regular agenda that will give an opportunity to, to make those, that motion or those motions as they, as they may be. But everyone certainly has, has heard those comments, and it, it would be a game changer to have a fee in lieu of taxes or, or, or the direct customer relationship.
Well, and I think it's necessary. We, we, we provide a lot to the university, and the university is very, I mean, we cherish the university, but they need to be a player with us, need to be at the table with us. And so it's like asking your big brother to come in and help you.
Right, right, I agree.
Thank you.
So, Madam Manager, you had to comment.
Just briefly, Mr. Mayor, members of the commission. Commissioner Chestnut, I, I hear you loud and clear. The only element in what you were proposing on Thursday, I'm assuming as a motion, would be the four-week turnaround in terms of returning to this commission with, I guess, maybe decisions to base our budget on. I think it's a little soon. There's a lot of work involved with that, and we, I on behalf of staff, want to really be deliberate and intentional about, you know, and they are a part of the levers that I talked about, the realignment, reorganization, taking a complete look at vacancies, feeling, deciding on which vacancies need to remain vacant, which ones we need to eliminate. All of that will be looked at, but to be able to have that rolled into a four-week process is really aggressive. And I would, as, I know we're not going to vote on anything today.
Right.
But I'd just like to ask the commission to keep that in mind. That is a very weighty process.
Okay, let me ask then, this then, would the, would the staff have a problem with an immediate hiring freeze?
If I might, Mr. Mayor?
Please.
We discussed that last Friday at nine o'clock. And definitely, a hiring freeze is what will be in place. I have not sent the memo out yet. I did meet with the HR director this morning at 9:30ish, and we talked about the hiring freeze. And so yes, that clearly would be one of the levers.
Okay, all right. Thank you, thank you.
Okay, thank you all. You're welcome. Thank you. Commissioner Dr. Walker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you also to the members of the J-LAC committee who are joining us in this meeting today. It was truly an interesting meeting to watch and to experience, and honestly, in a very strange way, I'm grateful. One of the things that I'm most grateful for is the fact that I believe that we have the potential to engage with J-LAC in finding some assistance. I was most happy to hear Chair Pisa mentioned that he was willing to take a look at some of our contracts, and that is something, colleagues, that I'm actually hoping that we will take him and this committee up on. They offered to take a look at the Orgeous contract, and I do believe that I certainly would welcome that opportunity. Commissioner Chestnut, you clearly broke into my house last night. And read my notes. So many of the items and the issues that you have mentioned today are certainly very serious to me as well and things that I'm certainly hoping that we'll take up. I want to lean in just a little bit on the payment in lieu of taxes because it's something that I've said from this dais as well. Interestingly enough, as I was considering that in this particular conversation, it occurred to me that, you know, there may not be an appetite politically to do that. However, I think that if approached in the right way, if we are able to bring our partners, and I do say partners because we partner with the University of Florida on many things, if we're able to engage them in the right way, possibly pulling together even a group of individuals that can have this conversation, I think we would be positioning ourselves and this city for something that is sustainable. We heard that word in J-LAC's committee meeting quite often. How will we sustain GRU? How will we sustain our fiscal health once we arrive at that point? I think that the payment in lieu of taxes is certainly something that I am very interested in seeing us have some conversations around and hopefully entering into. We see the precedent has been set throughout this country at different universities, and I'm hoping we'll take that up as well here. Repealing the commission salaries, absolutely. I believe we have to lead by example. Everyone knows where I fell on this situation from the beginning, and so it's not difficult or challenging for me to say repealing the commission salaries is something else that I believe we need to do. Obviously, eliminating the GFT and taking $38 million out of the budget, dedicating it to pay off the debt. I see you, Madam Curry.
Thirty-three and a half.
Thirty-three and a half? Okay. Well, you figure out the actual number. That's fine, but you, I mean, we, clearly, it has to be, this has to be done surgically, but it has to be done boldly, as we have heard. And there are going to be some things that are going to hurt. I think that I'm interested in hearing kind of specifically, and you may be doing this already, Madam Manager, in terms of percentage-wise, a 10% to 20% reduction in all costs. Perhaps you're thinking about doing something more, or I don't know where you're falling on that, but I certainly welcome your comments. Do I see you pressing your button?
Didn't know if you wanted them now or whether...
No, no, I mean, maybe, maybe you can, I don't have to have that now.
I think an across-the-board at this point is really, it's, it sounds equitable, but it may not be the right thing for the city of Gainesville.
Okay.
Depending on the department, which is why I think we have to go from zero up, take a look at it, also align it with the strategies that have already been identified by this commission. But I think doing it across the board is not the right approach at this point in time.
No problem, and I can appreciate that because you've often heard me use the word equity. So that's something that I'm interested in. Let's do it equitably, but I need it for you to hear my heart on this.
Yes, understood.
This all has to be bold. I'm going to make a couple of other suggestions that, because I believe we have to throw everything out on the table, colleagues. We have to throw the things out on the table that we don't want to throw out on the table. We don't want to be in this position, but here we are, having to make the hard decisions that we didn't cause, but that we have to try to fix. It came to me that at some point, and I will need a little help here in terms of the genesis of this, but at one point, there was an additional fee that was placed on rentals at the airport. Is anybody from this commission aware of that? I'm curious as to what that might look like. If we went back to, there was at one point, I believe, a $2 increase on rentals at the airport.
Car rentals.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. I, I think we have to kind of think out of the box here, too. Okay, so I don't know what that looks like. I tend to be a little unconventional, as you all know, but I think we have to be that in this time. Okay, so what that might look like, I'd be interested to hear. It is a beloved asset. I see your faces. But we're throwing everything out on the table. What if we sold ironwood? I hear you. We got to put everything out on the table. Ultimately, I would like to keep our utility. I would like to keep our utility. But I think the value in these kinds of conversations is that we literally put everything out on the table, everything. Because I want J-LAC to understand that we're serious. And I also want to be able to move us closer to really being able to address our debt, minimizing the harm to the residents of this city. I've read articles, and certainly I am no utility expert by any stretch of the imagination, but I've seen the articles after the meeting that suggest that our goal of being completely renewable by 2045 will put us in much greater debt. I'm curious about those numbers, and I want the community to hear me. I'm not saying that's not a priority for me. I am just suggesting that we assess everything that we have said we are going to do. Because this is critical. It's like we are on the operating table and we're in critical condition, and the surgeon is having to make some critical decisions. I think these are much smaller issues that I frankly heard from some of our constituents that I want to put out on the table of monies that we spend, our meals, if we consider brown bagging it. Thank you, Omi, for the wonderful services that we are getting. I appreciate it. But it may be that we need to reconsider all the little things now. And perhaps we need to take a look at our travel budgets. Everything, everything. I'll conclude my comments for this time, but I simply wanted to start out by saying thank you to the J-LAC committee. I look forward to taking you up on your offers for assistance. Thank you to my colleagues here, who I believe are strapping in for this bumpy ride that will not be easy, where we will have to make some hard decisions. I'll conclude for now, Mr. Mayor. I thank you. I'm sure I'll have some other things to say in just a few moments.
Madam Manager, did you have anything you needed to add on that? Okay, all right, thank you. Commissioner Book.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So that, what I've just heard from two of my colleagues at the dais is precisely the benefit of hearing from those who have served for a period of time and have tenure and the capability to see perspective. That's very important. So both helpful for me, and I think in some of my comments, you'll actually hear similar themes. We are not allowed to speak to each other on matters that come before the commission, and that's critical to know because you'll hear similar themes, and yet we have never discussed them. We haven't had any ideas about them. There's no phone calls, there's no texts, there's no emails, there's nothing. And if you see some commonalities in some of the themes as it relates to taking a real hard look at us internally first, then, then that's a good thing. So I appreciate hearing those, those items. Much like my two previous colleagues, I want to say thank you very much to our nonpartisan members, both the chair and, and the senator that is on, on the line with us. I appreciate it very much. Three of us have only been serving for a very short period of time, but I can tell you that the second we take office, we are accountable. It does not matter, looking back, it does not matter what we point out as potential missed ups, that is irrelevant because the minute you sit in a chair, if we're sitting up here as the seven, then we are responsible. I feel personally accountable, and I tell you that especially to our nonpartisan J-LAC group to say that bold, decisive, dramatic, or all terms you would apply to what we need to do to get our financial affairs in order and reduce debt service and serve the community at the same time, which I thought was very important that you said, Mr. Cunningham. So with that, I'm just gonna, I'm actually going to be much shorter than I thought I would have been because you don't need to hear, I just want you to hear the theme and indicate that, again, there's some overlap from what you heard, and also we have other colleagues here at the dais. So that significantly reduced the general fund transfer. That's, that's nowhere near $2 million. That's looking at what's the impact of $10 million, $20 million, $30 million? And Madam Manager, I think you said our current is $33.5 million. Is that accurate?
Yes.
So we need to know the impacts fiscally of what those mean for us. Are we able to both commit to service at those different levels and reduce debt at those levels and see what those are? Because it's the only way we're going to know what's appropriate from, from an increased general fund transfer. It's not going to be $2 million, $3 million, $4 million. It's going to be at the numbers that approach potential complete general fund transfer elimination or something very close to that. Now, that's idea one. I've already heard something, the freezing of open positions is what good organizations do, and that should be across our six charter leaders, when you know that you have issues that are financially insolvent. These are all, every vacant position, every line that's not filled, anyone that has not signed a contract as of this afternoon. I will hope that the, the six charters are saying at the moment, we need to see where we go with this. That's, that's good jurisprudence as it relates to our budget. And that kind of ties into something that's been talked about is this decrement packages. So the Madam Managers already spoken about looking from a zero-budget base, which I think is terrific, and see, are there opportunities at 5% or 10%? I already heard a number that was put out that, that Madam Manager, you said is not something we would look at across the board, so I appreciate you providing that feedback. But we do need to be looking across the six charters as decrement packages, and that's something that I think will come up later. The important thing about decrement packages is you can apply them across the board in any government organization. You can apply them in your non-critical, non-essential functions. So what would I think is essential? Critical infrastructure like roads is essential. Public safety, which is already, I think, Mr. Mayor, you mentioned that, is essential. You start with the essential components, parks and recreation. Sometimes people think that is not essential, but at least the services that we have at the level we have may be. I don't know. That's where, so when I think about decrement packages, those are not across the board, so I think that's important for Madam Manager to know. I agree with what she said. You can't apply it across every sector, but you have to apply it. So I would hope that you'd be considering decrement packages. The state staff assistants, we've heard it twice. We have been offered by the J-LAC the potential to reach out and say, how can you work intrinsically with us, intrusively with us? And I would personally welcome staff members or assistants in review of our contract to come right here to Gainesville and help us find what might be the budget savings that we can do to deal with this general fund transfer. The solar contract, I voted for it. I'm, I'm for renewable energy and different sources of energy and divested energy sources. That's a good thing for the city. But as the mayor Protem said, we may be in a position, we have to put that on the table and look at it. My understanding is that the contract has not been signed yet. I would recommend, and I think we'll probably talk about this from an action item on Thursday, that we do not sign that contract while we take a look at it. Once we put our signature to paper, we may be in a position that we can't, that, that is much more difficult for us to extract ourselves from, if we have to extract ourselves from. I'm not saying I like that option, I'm saying that we have to look at that option. And then lastly, I think that this is important, is that the, simply the recognition that the vast majority of our staff, charters, and people that are employed across the city, including perhaps almost everybody here, I believe feels accountable, and that in no way takes away from the work that we're doing on a daily basis. You have staff who are doing the job. I don't know if they're reading meters, something that we've discussed. I don't know if they're reading meters, something that we've discussed um, at great length. I don't know if they're taking customer service calls across our city. I don't know if we're providing services and cleaning our roads, but I can tell you that's not where our, our problems lie. Those are the people doing the job. Our problems lie with an incredible debt that will crush the city and will be unable to be sustainable. So I think that's important for our staff. And um, with that, I conclude, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Book? There were a couple of things I wanted to uh, to, to follow up on there, but I'll, I'll get to it all later. Uh, Commissioner Eastman?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and uh, thank you for putting this on the agenda. Um, obviously, this is not the way that I would have wanted this conversation to begin as under this audit committee, but I think this is good. And I, when I speak with staff, you, I would have expected there to be a lot more um, anxiety about this upfront. But I, what I'm hearing as I was speaking with staff, all this is moving very quickly is an excitement that they're able to start talking about the efficiencies and the things that um, that they have seen in local government that now gives them the opportunity to really start embracing some of those things. Uh, can, um, the Madam Manager spoke about a zero-based budget. I know that's something you've spoken about before all of this, and now you have the opportunity to move forward with our fire, with our police. I think um, everyone I know in our government wants to see a government that works well and is efficient. And I think this is a really great opportunity to really uh, that J-LAC has given us to start um, really taking the time to do that. And so I think that is good. Um, I've said it before um, up here that my North Star has always been what we're leaving for future generations when I'm leaving uh, my daughter. And as it relates to the city of Gainesville and this issue, um, I want to ensure that um, that that debt, as you read through the backup of GRU and you read through all of the issues that have come up with it, it is clear that debt is a huge burden we are leaving on future generations. I also want to ensure that GRU is still owned by the people it serves like it has been for over 100 years. Um, in 1912, I, well, first let me get to, I, I did not come here today with very specific things I wanted to see. I want to see the process play out. There's nothing you said that I disagree with. I want to see everything on the table, um, as Commissioner Duncan Walker said. Um, and uh, there's uh, you know, a number of things I could see that we move forward with. Um, and uh, I'm excited to begin that process. Um, uh, but I just wanted to point out, uh, Gainesville Regional Utilities, we've been here since 1912. It was one of the best decisions that we made when we got into a billing dispute for $7.30 over streetlights that we decided that we were going to have power and create it locally. That decision led directly to the University of Florida choosing to make a land grant university right here in the city of Gainesville. We would not be the city of Gainesville without the University of Florida here. Um, that decision uh, has led to millions of dollars that would have gone to out-of-state investors to be stayed here in our community, which has made us um, one of the most livable places in the country. If there's, if there's things that you love about the city of Gainesville, it's a good chance that because we had GRU in our backyard and we were getting, we were getting what would have been invest, what would have gone to investors, we're keeping it local. A lot of the parks, a lot of the roads, a lot of the um, amenities that we love have been a part of that. Um, I don't, obviously, our oversight of that and some of the financial aspects of that need to be kept up as we move forward. Um, and that has not happened. But I want to, as I said, leave for my daughter, less debt than what we see, but a utility that is owned by the people it serves. And I just, and uh, well, I'd like to welcome just the legislature in this very difficult conversation. This is not the first time we've had this conversation, as everyone up here is well aware. We have had, um, there's been frustrations with our utility. We are frustrated with high rates. We're frustrated with mistakes in the past. We're frustrated that the answers, there's no real easy answers for how we get out of that. Uh, there's also a lot of pride in that. There's a pride in the history that we have with GRU. There's a pride in how well-run our utility is. Um, incredible reliability despite our high rates. If there's a utility that you were going to be under during a hurricane, you would want to be at GRU. We've never had a system-wide blackout. And since we're talking about the debt, I do think this is important. We have been downgraded a few times here. Um, but we are talking about a very highly rated Gainesville Regional Utilities. Fitch is rated as A+. S&amp;P is rated as A. Moody's AA3. For comparison, Florida Power and Lights rated A by Fitch. Tampa Electric Company's A-, as I said, Fitch rated us A+. In spite of our debt and leverage, they rate us this highly because we are such a great utility. At our view, GRU, I'm reading from S&amp;P's review of our debt. At our view, GRU has enterprise and financial risk profiles that are strong. We believe that the depth of the service area, solid management and planning, and very strong coverage and liquidity support the rating, although high rates from a substantial debt burden are a drag on credit quality. When Fitch rated us A+, they said, uh, GRU's leverage is high for this rating. Fitch expects a trend of improvement in leverage as a result of approved base rate increases, lower general fund transfers, the recovery of actual fuel costs, and the expected rise in financial margins. And uh, I read all of these things just to say that what I would like for us to do is really look at what brings us to a point of sustainability. I um, I want to take this issue as seriously as it deserves and to respond and to be bold and forceful. I also want to make sure that we are on a path of sustainability that matches what our bondholders are expecting us to do and what our residents are expecting us to do. I am reading um, a strong financial underpinning to our utility that also has high debt, that also has a general fund transfer that needs to be addressed much more strongly than it has been in the past. I think we can do it. I don't think we need to overreact in how to do that while we are still bold. I think what you put forward is a lot of bold actions. I think um, what everyone I've heard beforehand has had a lot of bold actions to it. And um, so I'll, I'll conclude my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Eastman. Commissioner Willetts?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, uh, thank you to the J-LAC Committee uh, for last Thursday's meeting and thank you, uh, Representative Caruso and Senator Pisa for joining us today. Uh, last Thursday during the, that meeting, I stayed in, in Gainesville. I didn't go to Tallahassee. Uh, that morning, I uh, was at the uh, shovel turning ceremony for a new North Florida uh, regional hospital, North Florida Hospital uh, emergency room out on Archer. And after that, I had some time since we didn't have our normal meeting and I stopped by um, station number nine. It's in my district, our fire station out there, Fire Rescue Station. Um, because I, I had heard it's a place I needed to come see, uh, to come see some, some general deficiencies. And I just stopped in. It was just to say hi to um, some staff and to physically know where it was. It's a place I'd already driven, driven by, but not stopped to see. Um, and I, I did that on purpose uh, at the time of that J-LAC committee, not just that I had free time uh, in that, in that moment. But I did it on purpose to so that I could, on our end, on my end, uh, commissioners who didn't go to Tallahassee, uh, to, to feel the struggle and the balance that we work with every single day, every single budget, every single year. Um, all our charter officers, all the members uh, of the commission and the mayor. What we balance, the needs of our community and then our resources and assets that we have. Uh, so I, I did that on purpose and it, it left a mark with me, um, not just because it was something on the list I needed to go do to, to go look at another um, of our city's assets. Um, and also our human assets and our uh, community builders, our staff. Um, but I really wanted to look at that as we consider what was uh, being discussed in Tallahassee. Um, I know that when I ran, uh, when I first decided to run in May of 2022, the, the number one deciding factor of why I should run or why would I even consider to run um, was really, it was, it was in regards to GRU, the public utility. Uh, as I like to put it, the people's power because electricity is a huge portion of it. Um, and my greatest fear is that if I didn't run, the people on the ballot that I could vote for to represent me in, in southwest Gainesville would be people who were afraid of making hard decisions uh, about our, our public utility. They would make decisions, they would skew towards policies that might be temporarily and immediately popular. But that would in the long term threaten uh, the health and success of our public utility, the people's power GRU. And so I looked at it, that my, the reason why I jumped in is because there's, there's a million reasons why um, someone might jump in and run. But that the, the long-term sustainability of GRU, and for me, that was not just the environmental, but it was the financial. Those were my, those were my goals for our utility, was long-term sustainability. Uh, cause as, uh, as you mentioned, Commissioner Eastman, um, it is, the pride and joy of Gainesville is that we, we own a utility that, that has um, that has impact on all walks, all parts of our life. Uh, it is a utility that is not just water or wastewater. It is also electricity. It is also natural gas. It is also um, some telecommunications services. Um, I picked Gainesville because it was a great place to me. Um, and I know the more I learn, the more, what I learned about GRU, one of the reasons that Gainesville was a great place was GRU. And of course, also because of the University of Florida, along with Santa Fe being, being here. But the University of Florida is a key to the development of our city and to the present and to the future. Um, UF being a partner is something I'm very interested in looking at because uh, there's just one of the largest portions of our community. Uh, what they do on their campus, what they do off of their campus, it affects us. It impacts all of the residents and our neighbors in the city. So them being partners, whether it's we bring them on um, as a customer in some form more so, we partnered with them in the past uh, to some, to some, you know, to some real success that met their needs and also met our ability to provide service to them. And some of those in the past have been great for our utility and hopefully uh, as we may hear from UF in the future, that it's met their needs. Um, a payment in lieu of taxes is something that I think is a, a real no-brainer. The services we provide as an entire city to UF beyond just being, you know, just the city where UF happens to be, we provide real services. We provide fire services to the tunes of hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars. Uh, that were, were the University of Florida just a large campus um, of, of, I don't know, Microsoft or they're just a bunch of engineers uh, or some other firm there. Uh, their property would provide us a lot more tax revenue to pay for our critical services, to pay for public safety, for parks, to help us with our, with our housing issues that we're funding. So that's uh, that's a very interesting thing and I hope UF is willing and open to some of those conversations, particularly in the areas where the benefit and the service from the city is very clear and evident, like in uh, fire rescue services. Um, as we go forward, you know, um, and just to, you know, for those of you who have been on the commission far longer than me, you probably know this, that when you first joined, you, it was like a fire hose of information from staff, from charters. Uh, I want to make sure you know that I've gotten the fire hose. It, it, nothing changed with that. Um, so, and, and to the public also to hear this, that as soon as I, I took, um, as soon as I got into office even before, the conversations from our charters, from GRU, um, from the, from the city manager, uh, to help me understand our budget, to understand our revenues and our expenses, some of the things we look forward to in the future, some of these struggles. These are things that were immediately talked about so that we could head into budget season. Much of, much of what we're looking at is really just a uh, a um, moved up, moved up the timeframe. We, our budget, we were beginning our budget process, um, literally as this came up. And these issues that are, that are identified are things that were identified and I talked to, um, I talked to Manager Cunningham, uh, Manager Curry about that some of the ways, you know, in general that we, we look at our revenue between GRU to the general fund transfer to general government is, you know, the debt, the debt service, how much it costs, how much general fund, general fund transfer is, how we reduce it or increase it, stay the same. Um, and, and how we do that, if we reduce general fund transfer. How even the current plan that we've been on, the $2 million a year stepped out, that was handled um, by reducing some government expenditures, whether that's in personnel um, or other places. But then also that, that general uh, redu, increasing the mileage is one of those options that are out there. I think we have a lot of options in front of us. I look forward to um, staff really telling us a, a lot about them in different uh, permutations. Um, I suspect it's going to be a little of everything. It's not going to be one or the other. I, um, like most of us in our personal lives, uh, we manage both sides of our budget, not just the income or the expense. We, we manage both sides. Um, and so yeah, I, I look forward to it. I'm excited. Um, but I, I wanted to make sure um, that my colleagues understand that one of the main reasons I ran for office, the number one reason of just yes, no, would you even consider it? Um, what's the big thing you could achieve? And it was, the first thing in my mind was, oh, we gotta keep GRU a public utility. It is the people's power. It's mine. Um, and that's the, one of the first things. So as we look, as we go forward, um, I think we just need to know that there's a lot of support in our community um, for GRU as an idea. I think sometimes uh, in practice, we're a little, um, we fall short. Um, but I also know that our customers, as opposed to other utilities, they have the right to come talk to us, to email us. And we hear from them, which is something you might not get in other utilities that are not publicly owned. So it's one of the things I enjoy about Gainesville. It's one of the things I plan on continuing to enjoy about Gainesville. Um, so I look forward to the process that we are starting on. It's something we would have already been doing. Um, but I look forward to it and I look forward to staff bringing back a, a lot of our options so that we understand um, and so that we don't make a rash decision one way or the other. Um, that we really understand the full picture of our options and we um, explore them. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Willetts. Commissioner Sacco?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you to all my colleagues who have already spoken. Um, this was a hard conversation. I'll admit that. And I, I think the part that gets to me is that original contract to purchase power was signed when I was still 18 years old. I was barely old enough to vote. Um, and now it's something that's on our lap. So it's a, it's a it's a consistent problem that springs from that junction and it's, it's frustrating for I think everybody up here because no one was part of that decision. But we have to find a way to resolve it. Um, that said, I, I will agree with my colleagues who are really insistent on the notion that GRU remain a public utility. I think having lived across at least a half a dozen, if not more, different utilities of different services in different states, I have never seen a response timeline like GRU's. I will agree with Commissioner Eastman, if there's a hurricane, I want to be here. Um, because GRU will have power backup like nobody's business. Um, but I agree, we need to take bold and really creative actions. We need to even start on this dais and it hasn't been mentioned yet, but I know it would save a uh, a significant amount of money every year. I would propose that, given that it is not historically part of the commission, that the at-large seats be sunsetted after the current term. That is an amount of money that is two whole salaries and benefits and other expenses that could also be removed. And that hasn't been mentioned, I think, and I would volunteer, as uh, our colleague said, boldly and creatively and lead uh, example, that could be something that is also removed from our budget. Um, it hasn't traditionally been part of this commission, but that could be another thing we look at. As many have said, nothing should be off the table as a consideration. I agree that we should look at other ways we can partner with UF. My understanding, Mr. Cunningham, is that the hospital system does purchase power and water does come, but there are other more, uh, the larger part of their energy does not come from us, correct?
So, uh, Mr. Mayor, for the main campus does not come from us, but ancillary properties that are throughout Alachua County in our service area, we do provide power as well as to the shans through the South Energy Center.
Thank you, Mr. Cunningham. Um, so again, there could be other opportunities. They've seen how well we do work. They have with uh, Tallahassee's assistance. We can look at that main campus option. Um, but I, I want to bring us back to what uh, the manager said very early on, they need time. We need to give them the time to come up with options, to research them thoroughly. Um, and with the plethora of staff and experts that they have at their disposal, see what the options and try to foresee those consequences. Um, and so I really want to defer to that request of time and space that they can do what they are, have been hired to do to figure out, um. I, I think you, Mr. Mayor, told me many years ago before I was even on this commission, there will always be a fire. There was always a fire today or tomorrow. Um, even if you put one out today, there will be another fire tomorrow. Staff is working on those daily fires while also looking at this one. And rushing to one decision today, tomorrow, Thursday will not necessarily solve it in the long run and staff really needs that lead time. And Tallahassee has generously given us that time for our staff to do that work. So I, I wanted to really bring back to that point, as I think I'm the last one to speak now. Um, that we should respect that request from, from staff. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Sacco. Thank you all for, for weighing in. I'll take a moment to just uh, follow up on a couple of things. First, I'll say that if there's a hurricane, I want to be where the hurricane ain't, uh, not, not, just, just out loud. Um, it's true, there, there is always a fire. There, there is always something that has to be addressed. But every time, and I see some, some folks who've been commissioners a, a good while ago here in the room with us, it's always been that way. And we always have to then find while we put energies toward fixing And we always have to then find, while we put energies toward fixing today's problem, this afternoon's problem, this hour's problem, we've got to keep our minds and our, and our attention and our resources on, it's like the slide says, the business of the city. Everything has to keep happening also. And, and I can't say often enough how much I appreciate our, our community builders, our, our workers for making sure that that happens all the time. There's always going to be another fire to, to put out. And metaphorically, Chief Dixon, hopefully everything is not literally on fire. There's always an emergency to be dealt with, but we are absolutely committed to making sure that, that the things that have to be handled on a day-to-day, hour-to-hour basis continue to be handled and that this remains a wonderful place to live. I love the idea of some consolidation between the, between the, the sides of, of the house. We talked about that probably more than a year ago on, on this commission and, and I think we actually voted to, to, voted affirmatively, if not, I think unanimously, to take some looks at that. And when I say that, I don't mean to, to, to no longer have employees in those positions. I don't mean to fire people. I mean, let's be sure we're doing things as efficiently as possible, both financially and from a service perspective. Maybe what we will find out is that there, there is no benefit to, to that, but we need to take a look at it. We have not taken that hard look at it and, and it's time to, to do that as a part of this. An audit, I've said this many, many times, an audit is a management tool. And this gives us an opportunity to take a hard look at the organization at every level and work forward from that position. It's unpleasant while we do it, as, as the manager said, but it is a management tool and, and we should treat it as such. I want to remind everyone that just a few blocks south of here, there are, there's about 17 acres, if not a little more creatively, depending on how we think about it, in the Power District that has been fallow for a good decade now. We had an opportunity to move forward with it. We, we made some choices back in 2017 that didn't pan out, but as we look for sources of revenue, that's one, that's one. And I mean ongoing, you know, as, as we are able to figure out what we want to do there. We have a workshop coming up about the Power District, I believe, and it's high time we made decisions there so we can start generating some, some tax revenue from a big chunk of downtown Gainesville that just sits there fallow. And shame on us for, and the other commissions that I've sat on over the years for, for not having moved forward with that with, with more haste. But here it is now, it's time to consider it. And as we consider it, as with everything else, we're going to hear what the public has to say about the Power District. I've, I think we've all heard from folks who live nearby and we need to keep all that in mind, but it's time to, to make some decisions regarding that. I'll say again, I love, love, love the idea of a payment in lieu of taxes from the University of Florida and Santa Fe College, but let's keep in mind that we don't get to make that decision. We, we could pass a resolution that says do this all day long, does not change anything. But we do have some folks listening from the legislature who can make that happen. I'm not saying that they must because we don't get to make that decision, but I'm glad that we're having the conversation. And, and I want to let our, our, our partners at the county, folks across the street know that as we move away from some of the things that I think we're probably going to have to move away from, from a funding basis, we need you as partners. We, we, we need that slack to be picked up where we drop it. So I'm, I'm reaching out to all our, our institutional partners. I, I want you to hear me that there are going to be things in our community that we need you on, that we have to have you step on to pick up. We need to, to move forward on some, some concepts we've had about sponsorships and having a policy for sponsorships, because there are things that, that we might be able to, to have sponsored that we offer as a city, that heretofore have been entirely paid for out of, out of taxes, that might be able to be sponsored moving forward. I agree with all my colleagues that everything is on the table, that things are on the table and I want to have conversations about this, but I don't do the day-to-day management. We don't do the day-to-day management. We have amazing senior staff who does the day-to-day management and I want to hear from them. My promise to everyone, staff, everyone listening, everybody here in the room, everybody tuning in from anywhere else, is that I will listen to you, I will listen particularly to our staff, that whose job it is to give us the best recommendations. If we choose to bring in third-party folks to give us recommendations, my ears are open and, and before I make the decisions, I want to hear from all kinds of folks. I'm not going to commit to you that, you know, that I'm, I'm not throwing ideas out there today. I want to hear what, what our professionals bring us. I want to hear what the community needs most. So that's why I want us to, to have these conversations. We listed earlier, the, the workshops that are forthcoming. I do think that we are headed toward certainly not, certainly lowering in a drastic way, if not eliminating, perhaps eliminating the general fund transfer and, and we're going to, to need to, to figure out what happens when that's not there. So I could talk about this all afternoon because I have a whole lot of thoughts. I, I'm glad that, that you all found it interesting to watch the other day. Interesting is not the word that, that I would use, having been in the room, but, but I appreciate the, the opportunity honestly to, to have been there and to hear directly from our, our elected representatives in the legislature where we need to be thinking about moving toward and where we need to boldly move toward. With that, I'm going to ask Madam Clerk that we start hearing from the public and when that is finished, when everyone is just happy to say, we will come back and hear from the commissioners again before we move on.
Our first speaker is Robert Mounds.
And, and Madam Clerk, who's up next after that, just so we can kind of cue this?
Our next speaker was Angela Casseal. She did have to leave, but is planning to send her comments in writing. Our next speaker in person is Don Fields.
Welcome, Mr. Mounds.
Good afternoon. I'm Robert Mounds. I didn't expect to be the first speaker. As some of you know, I've written extensively over the past several years about the original contract contract and about the buyout five years ago, 2017. And I'm not here to point fingers on those things anymore because I concluded long ago that we were stuck with those decisions, we were stuck with the debt, we were stuck with the plant and GRU can be credited for, I used to give Mr. Bilarski credit for putting lipstick on a pig. But our, your task now, and I, I'm glad to see the attitude that's being projected today so far, because what's really needed is a, a long-term plan to resolve that debt in a way that preserves essential services, which harm, does not harm the most vulnerable people, you know, with higher taxes, higher utility bills. You may recall, a couple of years ago, I was one that suggested doing what the federal government has occasionally mandated, a 10% across-the-board cut, just direct the city manager to go back to each department and tell us where you would make those cuts. Because I do believe they know where the fat is and what's really essential. So process is very important. I'm not the only one that's talked about that. I do think that transparency throughout the process is very important. Your budget meetings are not well-attended. There will be many of them. It would be helpful to have town halls, like Commissioner Chestnut has recommended, and bring in the public to talk about bigger, bigger and broader issues. I do think in terms of being bold, what Commissioner Chestnut, Commissioner Duncan Walker have recommended is a great start. I would throw out another possible one, consolidated city-county government. It's one thing to sunset the two at-large districts, but how much could be saved by that? So there's all kinds of things to look at. I would put everything on the table. I congratulate you for taking this seriously and I hope that will continue throughout the year until October 1st. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mounds. Mr. Fields. And who's following, Mr. Fields?
Following Mr. Fields is Ms. Martinez.
I, one of my first thoughts is, I'm, I'm looking even further ahead, is that I'm, I'm curious about what prevented even this new commission from immediately recognizing the financial health of the ci, the city and doing, making that a primary purpose. It took citizens from this city, from the city to go to Tallahassee, approach Perry and, and others to get this job coming around, what, three, four years later? I mean, this, this was building and yet it was not seen and, and something prevented that consideration and I think that should be looked at. I mean, it took the J-LAC to finally open the eyes. The adults came home, supervised the children and turned, turned things around so that they would behave more, more reasonably and, you know, essentially took you to the woodshed. And that should have been something you could have seen. I noticed that we're, they also suggest that you engage with citizens, but we're still on a three-minute timer. And some, so how, how do you, are you planning to fix that issue, to actually get all the information that's lying out here? I've, I have stood here after listening and, and after speaking, hearing others speak and talk to you, giving you idea after idea after idea, and then being essentially ignored. The J-LAC has suggested that you do more, more engagement with the citizens because they, there are experts out here. Bob Mounds is one, I mean, you just, I mean, you can almost name all of them, everyone that stands up here, Kim Tanser, Thomas, and just the numbers go on and on. These are people from, many of them from UF that have come here, David Denslow and so on, and yet they were just pushed aside and, and the locomotive, locomotive just went down the tracks without anyone at the wheel. So, I mean, I just, I just hope you recognize and come back around and ask you to think about what stopped you from not doing what J-LAC, it was pushed back again, against instead of embraced. Thank you.
Martinez.
Ms. Martinez.
Followed by Tom Canilio.
I'm Debbie Martinez. I've been coming here since 1994, addressing the city commission, and these last five years have been the most challenging five years of my lifetime. And thanks to Cynthia Chestnut's great leadership here today, my comments will be shorter. I echo what Mr. Fields just had to say. And I also want to thank Commissioner Desmond Duncan Walker for bringing her healthcare analogy to this situation. We are dying here. This debt is killing us. Thank you. It's important for everyone at home and in Tallahassee, which they probably already realize, is that the city commissioners serve as the Board of Directors of GRU. For decades, GRU provided us with affordable and reliable energy. It was the city commissioners who drove our utility into the ground. GRU did their job. It was the city commissioners who failed us. We have three members on the city commission with good judgment who want to hear more, not less, from the public. Ms. Chestnut, Mr. Book, and Ms. Duncan Walker. Thank you. Going out on social media trying to portray, to portray last week's bipartisan joint legislative auditing committee meeting in Tallahassee as being politically motivated does absolutely nothing to help solve the city's debt financial crisis before us today. The city's financial crisis was created by the Gainesville City Commission, who grossly mismanaged our utility and city finances, leaving, leaving us sitting on a mountain of debt and then went on a spending spree for the past five-plus years, led by Mayor Poe and Mr. Ward, and I hope that will be changing. Commissioners Cynthia Chestnut and Desmond Duncan Walker know all too well that there were seven litigants who took five, first of all, they were all true progressive Democrats, all seven of the litigants who took five legal actions against the city for their role in the multi-billion-dollar biomass treatment or financial debacle. So this is not politically motivated here. Many of us have been coming here for years, especially during budget season, for the past, you know, five years especially, asking the commission to please cut their bloated budget. But Mayor Poe and Mr. Ward continue to remain on this wild spending spree and the debt, the mountain of debt just continued to balloon, resulting in higher GRU bills. Every time you fail to do your due diligence, we all suffer, especially lower-income people. They end up bearing the brunt of your failures and thank you for addressing them. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Tom Canilio, followed by Nathan Scott.
Good after, good afternoon, commissioners. Thanks a lot for having this workshop. I love workshops. I think you ought to have more of them. I'm Tom Canilio. I'm with the Center of Sustainable Agroforestry and if Debbie wants to point fingers, she needs to point them at me because I was the person who came to the city commission 15 years ago, after serving on the Gainesville Energy Advisory Board. And we, with Dr. Green from UF, Mr. Post from UF, Dr. Prime from where the biomass power plant, by the way, was hatched and born, UF has done, and I'm just a graduate of the agronomy department, UF has done a heck of a lot of research in this area and if you want them to start buying electricity from, from us, the city, here's my suggestion. Talk to them about using their dedicated energy crop research to help us reach the goal of, what is it, 40, 40%, 30% by, by 20, by 2040. I wasn't around when that goal was discussed. As I wasn't asked, should we build a 100-megawatt power, biomass power plant, you know, by Fikiin Henrichan and Ed Reagan, and we would have said no, but we weren't asked. Don Post, who, and I, who wrote the biomass options for GRU Part Two, would have said 100 megawatts is crazy, you need to start small. And we didn't and Debbie's right. The city commission just inflated, you know, I don't know why, but here we are. Our debt is hurting us, but the national debt is $31 trillion. So my, my suggestion is to, to bring down a gentleman by the name of Paul Stevers, who's an engineer in, 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 in Canada, who has, who has a company called ThinkRenewables.com. He would tell us, get your credits, get your carbon credits from this renewable energy that you already have and sell them. I haven't heard anybody say anything about carbon credits here today. You need, you need to know that and we could sell a lot of carbon credits with very little changes to our biomass power plant, possibly none. And Paul Stevers, Canadian engineer, I'd love to bring him down here and have him talk to you about how that's done, because that's exactly what he's working on. Thank you.
Mr. Scott.
Mr. Scott, followed by Colleen Blount.
I'd like to have the streaming overhead before my time begins, please.
I'd like to have the streaming overhead before my time begins, please. Good afternoon, Mayor Ward, Commissioners, Nathan Scott. So Commissioner Eastman over the weekend challenged me to provide ideas and solutions. I've been doing so for 10 years. Here they are. Mayor, I sent you a letter from the City Commission. I copied J-LAC, I copied the Letchwood County Legislative Delegation, and provided seven recommendations, some of which have been covered. The detailed recommendations in this thing that took a lot of time on my part to prepare include many of the suggestions that Commissioner Chestnut mentioned, many of the suggestions that Commissioner Desmond Duncan Walker mentioned. Repealing the doubling of your salary, it's obvious, low-hanging fruit. I won't get into debate about throwing out letters to bamboozle people, but I think Commissioner Eastman needs to understand credit ratings because FPL's credit rating and balance sheet would make GRU look like it flunked kindergarten. Let's talk about the recommendations briefly. I try to be prudent. These are same recommendations I've offered for many years. These are the same recommendations high-paid consultants would give you. The only difference, I'm giving to you as a former state utility regulator for free, as I always have. All right? So I would suggest that you immediately suspend the general fund contribution from the GRU electric system for FY '24 and subsequent years, which would provide about approximately $22.3 million annually. Recommendation two, you need to offset from the general government budget when you consider the incremental increase in additional property tax revenue. It's about $17 million net. Problem is, you jacked the GFT allocation in 2019 for the electric system by $6.5 million unextricably, and then raised it again to almost $1 million in 2022. So again, there's a lot of games being played with things that the PSC has jurisdiction over. Other recommendations, you need to consider strategic options for Grucom, including the sale of the system. Very concerned about the proposal coming before the county commission, the UAB, because it doesn't address what the proceeds of the sale would be that's been done. It's not been transparent, the $8 million sale price. We don't know what the $8 million is going to be used for. There's about $11 million in debt, net book value 3.2 million or such. And there's $6 million in intercompany loans from GRU electric and gas system customers that no one wants to talk about. So is that debt included in that? Are the loans included in that? Things we need to discuss. I'll talk to the state auditor. Consider strategic options for a GRU electric system, including the sale of electric system that would substantially reduce and lower electric rates. I did the math. Even if you took out the entire GFT, and I hope you'll let me briefly conclude, this is a very important point, even if you took out the entire GFT, $37 million, $36 million, it's not going to solve the GRU debt crisis. You're going to have to consider strategic options. And if you can get made whole, the calculus is real simple. Franchise fee, annual franchise fee, plus additions to property tax base, if that offsets the GFT, and I'll conclude real quick. Then you look at the sale price, whether that erases the electric system debt. If that makes sense, then what would be the harm in considering an option that would reduce electric rates by 33 to 50%? Look at the other options. I hope that you will consider this, and I certainly will be talking to J-LAC about these recommendations and the alternative. Thank you.
Mr. Scott. Mr. Blount. Mr. Blount.
And you guys have a copy of all that email. Thank you.
Mr. Blount, followed by Mr. Shepherd.
Sorry, I can't get the wraps to the, stop. I'm very glad to hear some of your members talking about cutting down extravagances right here in this house. I was going to, I had been poised to suggest that you would all be ready to bring back your list, each one's personal list of the charities or community-based organizations you would contribute to with each paycheck before that pay raise clocks in, but to pull it back all together is even better yet. Here's an example of extravagance. For one little color item on this, which is not needed for clarity, here's a two-page item printed in color. Most people don't know that most copiers mix together the color ink to make black if you hit color. So this is 10 times more expensive than it needs to be. The meals, the, what do you call them, the catered meals, back-end chambers, I suggest everybody go out for a brisk walk around the block a couple times instead of that. That would get your juices flowing for your evening session a lot better. Imagine, imagine 10 and a half years ago, when all the arguing was going on about the biomass plan, if the hundreds and hundreds of citizens that came to this podium asking that that kind of funding go into rebates for rooftop solar. What better position would citizens of this city be in to meet their energy needs today and much less debt for the utility? But at that time, the commission was divided by its legal duty to be a fiduciary for the bond rating of the grid versus the best options for the citizens. I hope we can find a way to have a guarantee that that won't be a conflict on what we expect from y'all in the future. And as far as UF, yes, UF was the kernel, an early kernel around which this community grew. But Ms. Jackson would ask, what have you done for me lately? They have failed in reciprocity in so many ways, tearing down the hospital we gave them to instead foist upon us a facility that does not meet the most crucial need, plus we have to pay something for it. Our housing market about to be destroyed by the putting out of hundreds of married-student households into our market. So there's so many things to consider of how to increase, how to increase our budget standing. And I hope you will continue to look for ways that serve the citizens the best instead of meeting, what is it, balance sheet items. Thank you.
Shepherd, followed by Chuck Ross.
Hi, there's Commissioners and Mayor and Mr. Perez and the representatives. This is something that should have been looked into before each one of these Commissioners and Mayor took office, the debt of the city. This should have been compiled at the time that they come to sit in their chairs. There should have been a list of what their plan, a letter of intent of what their plan was as a Commissioner, as a Mayor, as a GRU individual, as a city manager and a lawyer. What was their letter of intent of moving forward? We didn't hear it. I've been coming for 14 years to this City Commission, and I have not seen a letter of intent done thus far. So I'm asking for that. I think Mr. Perez was making it audited on TV where I watched, and I've thought to myself this question is, we got a city manager, and yet we have our audit budget being declined from the date it's supposed to have been turned in. So why was she hired full-time? Shouldn't have ever done. Also, the cut of pay things, that's something I desperately like to see, of what gets cut and what doesn't, so we know what we're going to do moving forward. This year is critical, as you've said, Mayor. Harvey Ward is critical as far as our steps moving forward. I thank you for recognizing that and enduring us with that. As I've told you before, I think you're doing a good job as a Mayor, and that these people that are your Commissioners should help back you in your drive to what you think is your goal to move them forward, which I'd like to hear. I've scheduled appointments with each one of your Commissioners, Mayor, but I haven't been called about those appointments. I'm looking forward to that. I'm looking forward to the year to come to be a better financial move. I think we need to stop this new housing complex that's been put upon the people over on the east side, there's land agreements and that. We need to stop that immediately so that those elderly people on Fifth Street and so on are not scared about what they're going to do next year. And the meters in that area need to be addressed immediately. And for all the years that they've been declined, we need to take and give them honor to make that happen years ago. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shepherd. Mr. Ross.
Followed by Jennifer Powell.
Afternoon, everyone. I listened to the entire J-LAC meeting conducted by Senator Pizzo. As happens, I met Senator Pizzo when I lived down in North Miami area, at Piscanee Park. He's a no-nonsense guy and heed his words. And those of Representative Caruso and the rest of the J-LAC committee, take them seriously. Senator Pizzo's a no-nonsense guy, like I said, and when he says he will be watching, he will, and when he says to reach out, then do it. I'm shocked. He's on Zoom. When I'm shocked that our city officials did not seem prepared for the meeting, a number of questions by the committee went unanswered. I agree with the comments by Commissioners Chestnut, Duncan Walker, and Book, with a few minor exceptions. The city needs to take the budget apart piece by piece. Substantial cuts are required, and the GRU transfers need to be eliminated. Take a hard look at middle and upper management salaries and positions. Commissioner salaries, the raises, as Commissioner Chestnut first said, need to be rescinded, possibly reduced. Consider not only hiring freezes but cuts. It will likely require a property tax increase. And just to give you a perspective, I did an amortization schedule. I used $1.7 billion over 30 years at 3%. Those are just numbers that I, just to get an idea. And it would take approximately $85 million a year to pay that off over 30 years. If stringent measures are not taken, the state may force a sale of GRU. And I know that people don't want that, and you expressed the same. I actually have, lastly, I have a question for the attorney. Are the GRU transfers that were, it was pointed out, were not substantiated over the years? And then there were overcharges as well for the indirect costs. Are those monies that would have to be paid from the general fund back to GRU? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. Ms. Powell.
Ms. Powell, followed by Joe Little.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, City Commissioners. Thanks for holding this today. I was in Tallahassee. It was terrifying. Our ride home was nothing but trying to figure out ways to save us from this debacle. We had a few. You guys have mentioned some of them. So first off, my name is Jen Powell, and I am the organizer for CWA 3170. And we at CWA are looking forward to working with the commission and management to find a way forward that addresses J-LAC's concerns without burdening the city's residents and, of course, the city's workers who make this city run. I fully agree with many things that were mentioned, but I look forward to collaborating with everybody when it comes to the city workers. A lot of the different things, I know there were certain things mentioned to me by somebody who was here during the recession, going to a four-day work week, maybe looking at certain special appointments at the very top that we could do away with. There's a bunch of different things that I've heard from different workers who have been here through that timeframe where we were struggling to make ends meet because of the recession. So when we leave here, I plan on sending out a survey to all of our members with suggestions because who better to know where we can cut the budget but the people who are doing the work? They're the ones seeing the waste. We've talked about this in bargaining too, about different ways to, you know, find ways for us to bring up our raises. So now that we're having to do it to keep our utility, I think we need to definitely get some feedback from the members, and then I'd like to individually meet with all of the Commissioners, and then maybe if we can meet together during bargaining, if you guys could attend at some point. But that's basically what I want to say, is I'm looking forward to this. I'm glad these conversations have been happening. You know, we can't beat a dead horse here with who caused the problems. We have to deal with it now. It's been a long time coming. It's been two elections now that we have not discussed this. And now here we are, the legislature is forcing it. So I wish we would have done it sooner, but I'm definitely glad to work with you going forward. Thanks.
Welcome, Mayor, Commissioner.
Little. I'm Joe Little, resident of the city of Gainesville. The, 50 years ago, I was entering my second term, my second year as a member of this commission. We were on the fourth floor, and I don't remember, it was about this time of the year, but maybe sooner, sitting over here where Mrs. Cunningham was, was John R. Kelly, who was the, as you know, the utility director at that time. O.C. Fagan was over here, and Mr. Farmer was over here. And Cynthia, you don't remember this, but you were a little girl then. Anyway, John R. Kelly came in to us and said, I want you to build Deer Haven 2. And the commission built Deer Haven 2 with that support. And the city earned a lot of money for the utility up until the fiasco of purchasing the biomass plant. The things that you must do is you must bear in mind that without the Gainesville Regional Utility or the Gainesville Utility, Gainesville would be Hogtown. The difference in the amenities of this city and some city like Hogtown is based upon the earnings of the utility of the city of Gainesville. So your number-one job must be, of course, to deal with the budget matter, but to protect that utility. Don't let it be sold as someone just suggests it as a possible alternative. You may have to stop the transfer altogether for a period of time, but you don't want to eliminate the transfer because it ought to come back when you have, when the city has the financial capacity to do it, because that's what makes this a great city. For some years, I think it will not be such a great city because you're revenue-strapped, but you have to deal with that as you are dealing with it. As to specifics here, Cynthia, Commissioner Chestnut, 50 years ago, we tried to get the University of Florida to become a customer, and it didn't do it. But why? Then, of course, the chairman of the board over there was the president of Florida Light Company, which was then, of course, supplying electricity to the university. But keep it up. It's time for the University of Florida to become a customer of this city. The other things I would mention, you might consider going back to a five-member commissioner. I know two of you don't like this, but it's cheaper, it's more efficient way of running a government. And so my number-one message to you is to protect the utility at all costs and at the same time, of course, reduce the budget, reduce the services, whatever you have to do, but do it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tyler Forrest, followed by Bobby Murmer.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, Tyler Forrest. So I attended the Joint Legislative Auditing Committee hearing that brought us today, and I'm glad to see that you all are taking it as serious as Representative Caruso made clear. It's taken us many paths to lead us to this point. There's no point in arguing about which of those paths bears the most responsibility. We must focus on the path that we are going to take to get out of this together. It will require painful decisions. Senator Broder even recommended raising taxes along with Senator Simon and Representative Caruso. I don't know what the answer is going to be to the question, but I know it's not going to be an easy one. Hard decisions are going to have to be made, and citizens will have to make do, in some cases, with less services from the city. I'm committed to helping you make those decisions and advocating for them as long as we protect the workers that keep this city running. There is one red line that I and the majority of our community have shown time and time again. GRU electric, water, and wastewater must remain in public hands. Put another way, under absolutely no circumstances will this community accept selling off GRU's electric, water, or wastewater entities to a private business. And to all of our friends in Tallahassee who are watching, I'll make it even clearer. You can have GRU when you pry it from our cold, dead hands. Thank you.
Bobby Murmer.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, Bobby Murmer, coordinator of the Alachua County Labor Coalition, also, I forgot my glasses, so please bear with me. I too was unfortunately at the J-LAC hearing this past Thursday. And I'm very happy to see that this commission is taking the J-LAC audit so seriously, as I feel strongly being responsive to the Joint Legislative Committee is absolutely necessary to protect home rule here in Gainesville. We understand that some painful decisions will need to be made, but we agree with all the commissioners that selling the electric utility is off the table. It's off limits. I especially want to thank Commissioner Eastman for pointing out the inferior bond ratings of some of the investor-owned utilities in this state. This is important, because I fear a major impetus for the J-LAC audit was the desire on the part of FPNL, or maybe Duke, to do here what they couldn't do in Jacksonville. Take the money we pay for electric out of our community and put it in the pockets of investors for yachts or third, fourth homes or whatever. I especially want to also thank Commissioner Chestnut for emphasizing the need for UF to stop free riding and either make a payment in lieu of taxes or become a GRU customer. It's high time they become a good neighbor. The J-LAC hearing was a mere four days ago. The road ahead is long, and I hope the commission will not suggest anything today that they cannot walk back from. But we look forward to working with the commission and staff to find ways to tighten our belt in order to satisfy J-LAC without selling our utility or overly burdening the city's workers and residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murmer. Okay, that's all. I don't see any lights. Anybody? Okay. Commissioner Duncan Walker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had a question for the city attorney. So quite a while back, Attorney Need, probably when I first got here, close to two years ago, maybe a little after that, I engaged you in a conversation about payment in lieu of taxes. And we, clearly, we were not at this point having to respond to J-LAC in the way that we are now. So my logic was slightly different then than what it is now. I'm wondering if you might be able to speak to us, and I apologize for putting you on the spot. I just know that you and I said that at some point we would come back, you would be able to give me somewhat more of a legal kind of analysis or perspective in terms of that, because I'm glad to hear other people from this dais saying that they too are interested in that. I just know that you and I had that conversation quite some time ago. I'm wondering if you might be able to offer any type of legal insight.
Mr. Mayor, I think as we discussed then, while it would be tremendous to receive a payment in lieu of taxes from the university, I think we have to determine just what benefit do they see receiving from us that would justify such a payment? We have no way to compel them to make that payment. With services that we do provide, fire. I don't know that we've ever had the will to use that as leverage to try to compel a payment in lieu of taxes. I'm not sure what other services we provide that aren't, that aren't paid for. So, yeah, I think it's a legislative matter mainly for you to try to work out. Could that be something that the legislature could help with? Obviously. We've seen no indication of that, but that doesn't mean we can't hold out hope.
Thank you. Thank you for that. I certainly hope that, I know that we have at least two members from J-LAC that are here. And I certainly hope they're hearing our hearts and our concerns in that regard, and that they might have or develop the appetite to assist us in that way. Colleagues, I know that we have oftentimes talked about improving our relationship with the University of Florida. We do do a lot with them, and, you know, city attorney is stating that perhaps there's no justification in terms of city services. However, we partner a lot. We endorse a lot. We bring to the table on just about everything. And I have said oftentimes, I want us to remember that we have other people that we also need to be bringing to the table, aside from you us. So I say we have kind of been moved in a very favorable way where the University of Florida is concerned. I hope that they are hearing us today, seeing a need, that they may consider it being a good neighbor, if you will, or a good partner, if you will. And that a conversation somehow, aside from that, that the legislature may be able to or desire to have, might actually be able to ensue from this side of the dais where we say, UF, you are one of the flagships of this community. We respect you. We love what you bring. We are the City of Gainesville. We represent the citizens of this great city. How can we work together to see to it that Gainesville be able to function in a way that the citizens are happy with? In such a way that the city can be sustained in the best possible way as we move forward? So without prolonging this portion of the conversation anymore, I am certainly looking forward to that, whatever J-LAC is willing to help us with. I certainly hope they'll be willing to take that up to a degree. But also that we, as a commission, might also be willing to have that conversation with them to push it and help them to see our hearts and the need. Thank you. Oh, I did want to add this, Mr. Mayor, and this is more of a question. So the budget meetings and workshops that we have scheduled coming up are usually kind of lengthy. And I'm wondering if the conversations like the ones that we're having today, where we are inviting the community's input, if we may not have the appetite for, even the need for, some additional meetings? Because I think that the budget itself, just those conversations, may be heavy. And what we're doing in here today, honestly, I would like more of. As we continue to think about our ideas, I know a couple of commissioners up here have stated that this was not the meeting in which they brought ideas, but perhaps they will have some as we move forward. But also wanting to give the community the opportunity to respond to us as subject matter experts and as community members. So I'm just curious as to whether those workshops will be the place for those conversations? What are your thoughts on that?
The workshops sometimes are. I would encourage anyone who has something to offer, schedule individual meetings and send things to the commission. That's by far the better way to start than three minutes at a time. I would absolutely, to me, always the best way to reach out is to send us information, and then let's talk about the information, and then we can process forward from there. That would always be my recommendation.
I got you. And I hear you on that. I would just, then let me say it like this. What I will probably do, because I think that people will come forward, they're going to come to us individually, they've been doing that. But I think too, there's probably the need to either put forward a town hall conversation or something in addition to what is happening here today to allow for even more free-flowing of thought from the community. That's just something that I'm throwing out there on the table. I may sit with this and put something out there a little bit later in order to accommodate that, but thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Book.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So it's part of the fact that we have We do have dire financial situation for the city. And budget is the predominant thing that we're going to be discussing over the next few months. There are some major projects and developments that the city is moving forward with that with state and federal partners, we're still liable to do, and that's important to know. And those won't go away. And that's because our state legislators have already provided us some funding streams, and our federal partners have already provided us some funding streams. And that's critical. So I thought I'd mention a couple of them. And this is not to dissuade from the financial situation we're in. This is to say that some of the critical items that are absolutely essential to the city being a vibrant place to live can continue, because we've been provided monies from the state and federal government that are separate and distinct from our general operating funds, and that's important. So we have Vision Zero, 1.25, 1 and 1/4 million dollars ARPA funds, 75,000 from National Highway Traffic Safety Administration, $4 million with the University of Florida in partnership for some tech grants over the next two, three years. These are unimpacted by our general funds. We have tax increment funds. Now, if I have some of these figures slightly off, it's because when you go through a lot of our budget books, I have them slightly off. So let's say that these are approximate values, so I'm not held to what I say to the dollar. But we have 5.2 million in tax increment funds remaining that mostly are assigned to projects already, but they're assigned to projects in College Park, Downtown, Pleasant Street, Fifth Avenue, and the East Side in the Porters and the Power District. 5.2 million, unimpacted by our general fund, so that's important. We have a consolidated Gainesville Community Redevelopment Association. We do that in partnership with the county. We are expected between fiscal year '24 and fiscal year '29 to have $41 million. Most of those funds have already been discussed and accounted for over those five years, but they're meaningful projects that will be meaningful to our community. We have DOT grants. We have Federal Transit Authority grant, over $10 million. It's going to basically deal with renewable bus service, which affects our community. We have ARPA funds that we have designed, and this was before I was serving on the commission, so I appreciate the previous colleagues, that are giving $6.9 million to 36 nonprofits. 6.9 million to 36 nonprofits of ARPA funds. That's the one potential positive, that we have unique funding streams that are going to be finite in time, short in duration, but will be meaningful, that we can, that will do some good things while we are tightening up greatly over the next one to two to three, and hearing some of the experts in the field, perhaps over our lifetimes, long after we've served. I did want to say also, Mr. Mayor, that I appreciate the fact that when you have a union leader say that they're going to send a survey out to their membership, that's important, because that is unfiltered information that we'll get from people that will then provide us absolutely innovative ideas. You know, I think we're pretty knowledgeable up here, but we cannot estimate the information that's going to come from people that have served for a period of time. So I appreciate that from Ms. Powell. And lastly, I think that from our local legislative delegation, which Commissioner Chestnut mentioned, and this increased partnership, it would be, I think that you'll probably hear an idea from me that comes out where we say, "Let's meet with them as a combined group also." We do that with the county commission. I think we would benefit from that specifically in the budgetary process. And that I would hope that we could consider sooner rather than later. I think that we would get, I think we would get unfiltered feedback from our local legislative delegation also. And it would be helpful if we're looking them in the eye and working with them on the budget. So that's it. I conclude, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Book. And we're ready to Commissioner Eastman in just a second, but I want to thank you, Commissioner Book, for pointing out some of those projects. There are going to be lots and lots of things coming out of the ground over the next few years. And I don't want anybody to think that, that because we have these dedicated funding sources, like the GCRAT, like Wild Spaces Public Places, both infrastructure and traditional Wild Spaces Public Places, like these state and federal grants that we will be taking advantage of over the next few years, this continues to be a great city. And we have put together a variety of funding packages over the years that do not come from either the utility or from a general fund. And those allow us to continue to grow as a community and build infrastructure and build more things like the East Side Health and Economic Development Initiative, the, which is mostly a partnership, like rebuilding Citizens Field and MLK Center. These things will continue to happen. So when you see those things happen, don't say, "Oh, my gosh, I thought you had a fiscal issue. What's going on here?" That's why, because the foresight over the years was put together to have these dedicated funding sources that allow this to continue to be a great community while at the same time figuring out how to move forward with fiscal issues. So anyway, I appreciate you mentioning that, Commissioner Book. And I didn't want to forget to follow up on that. Commissioner Eastman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was actually going to thank Commissioner Book as well for making that point. I'd say in a lot of ways, Wild Spaces Public Places and the transportation surtax, they were passed by our voters, and we are in many ways just stewards of that money. They told us that they wanted this. They voted for it to be utilized. And so that really doesn't have a part to play in this. It is, we are stewards of that, because they voted on us. They told us how we wanted them to, how they wanted us to spend it, which was on those particular things. I wanted to, I have heard a number of things about where we're going with this and kind of the hard choices that we have to make. And I completely agree. I think there's some ones that we, you know, that I can see very clearly are just kind of low-hanging fruit, things like deduplicating services. For instance, we have two finance departments, two communications departments, two offices of equity and inclusion. Some of that stuff is really going to cut down. But I, well, first, let me ask, Mr. Attorney, you mentioned before fire assessment is a main one. I would like to hear from Chief Dixon, if you could get us the responses that you are giving when you go to the University of Florida, some of those, any other entities that don't pay currently into the fire assessment? The calls that you've taken with that and get that back to the commission at some point. I would like to see some data as to, do you have that?
I did have a study that was, excuse me. Good afternoon. So what I did have, looking at the shares there.
Hold up the mic. They can't hear you in Tallahassee without being on that.
Yes, sir. I apologize. What I do, am able to tell you that in 2016, a study was done by a vendor for the city that determined that it was just over $1 million. So I'm certain those numbers have changed, and I can certainly, projection, it would be closer to 1.2 million in today's dollars. And those calls were primarily associated with EMS calls and the calls for alarm, which we go to, go to, you know, someone pulling an alarm or to investigate. So, but GSG determined that to be, at that time in 2016, just over $1 million.
Okay.
And I will get that to you.
Thank you. I appreciate it. But I, and so thank you, Chief Dixon. I also wanted to point out that a lot of this discussion has been about general government. I don't want to leave Gainesville Regional Utilities out of this. As we have heard from CWA, which I will get to in a moment, because I really appreciate you guys coming out, we are all tightening our belt here. We are all talking about this. That means that it's going to come from general government, also our clerk's office, also Office of Equity and Inclusion. But half of our government budget is also GRU. And so GRU also has to be doing the same thing, where we're all tightening our belt. We're all talking about these things. And as we talk about the expenses, as I mentioned, some of the easy low-hanging fruit, like deduplicating services, talking with some of our partners about services we are already providing, like the University of Florida that they could help pay into. When we talk about hard choices, looking at our budget, it is not like there's some easy thing to cut out of there. We don't have underwater basket weaving in general government. We can just slice it right out. Our number one expense is police, $38 million. Firefighters, $22 million. Public Works, $15 million. Our combined communications is $4 million. These are core services. When people have a fire at their house, they expect our fire department to be there. When someone has an issue in their neighborhood, they want the police to show up quickly. When we talk, I think it's easy to talk about hard choices in the abstract, but in the reality, this is going to be people's safety and their lives on the ground level, because we are a municipality. We are a city. We provide really core services. And there's, you know, there is certainly things we will cut. But if we're talking, the more we talk, the more we go beyond, you know, 5 million, 10 million, we start talking 33 million, we're talking about very core services that we're cutting into. And if that's a path, if that is the path that we're going down, and it seems like we'll get at least close to that, I do think that everyone should recognize just how, what this is going to look like in the near future. I did want to get back to CWA. I think that was, we just, we just had our city's largest labor union say that they are willing to come to the table and talk about what they are willing to sacrifice in order to come together with management for these things. I think that was, we really appreciate that. I, and really welcome that the CWA is coming to the table with us and trying to figure out solutions to this, because I think that's what it's really going to take for us to get there. I also wanted to really make sure that, what I heard from J-LAC was the long-term sustainability of Gainesville Regional Utilities at its core. And so I really want to make sure that our bond council is a part of this, that we have experts from outside of the City of Gainesville that understand that. experts from outside of the city of Gainesville that understand that kind of a hard world of, you know, financing, of long-term viewpoint, of long-term how we're going to be able to pay our bondholders back and make that a core part of the conversation. Because I, I know I learned a lot over the weekend just going through all of our bonds, looking at what they have said over time, seeing how we have addressed those issues in each update to our bonding, and that to me is kind of the gold standard for what you're looking at, is when you're reading what our bondholders are saying with the people that are tasked with our debt, what they are saying about that. And so if I actually, if GRU could send that out to, to the commissioners so that we can take a look at some of the backup on that and really bring our bond council into that in the future, I think that would really help lead this process in a good way. And those are my comments, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Eastman. Commissioner Chestnut?
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to clarify the format of the budget workshops. Under the budget workshops, the public is not allowed to make comments? Is, or it's not on the agenda for them to make comments?
It depends on, on what we're doing specifically, and it's, it's really the discretion of the commission and the chair. It depends on, if we're doing something that is specifically very technical, and it's more of an education thing for, and background for the commission, we usually, we traditionally have not, because the whole point of it is for, for us to be able to digest very technical information and, and use that. If we're having lots of conversation in a budget workshop, we absolutely should have, we should be hearing from the public.
Okay. Yeah, may I suggest though, even though the budget workshop may be technical for us, I think questions from the audience really may help us to, to help to clarify points that are being made. So I think as often as possible, we need to try to add public comment to the budget workshops.
I, I hear you. It's a question of making sure that we add it in the, the item itself rather than, what I don't want to do is add on to a, an open comment thing that is about things that aren't what we're working on, because we need to focus on those things.
Specifically to that particular budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Willis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last week, the Finance Committee of the Commission, myself, Commissioner Book, and Commissioner Chestnut met, you'll, you'll have a, we will have a report back, I believe, I believe on our Thursday meeting. But one of the things we discussed, we already were looking at, how we go forward with staff positions that are added during the year, and we talked about and were concerned about how those become permanent, you know, budget lines into the future. So I wanted to let you know that it was already a topic of concern, or at least conversation. Next, I want to make sure that in all of this, I don't want to beat a dead horse, so to say, talk about past mistakes. I've been here all, you know, two months, not even. But I, what I don't want us to forget today as we leave here and continue to work and staff works, I don't want to forget all of our past successes. I came to Gainesville literally because it was a place that I thought that looked like a refuge for me personally and spiritually, emotionally. It is the place I needed to be because it would be a refuge to me, for me, and since then, I have, I have made sure that I have my little slice of the Gainesville good life. My slice is far different than what others, others might imagine for themselves, but it, it really can be and should be for everybody. We have, in the city of Gainesville, over the years before I ever came to Gainesville, but also while I've been here, we've had great, great successes. We, with our solar feed-in tariff program, we jump-started to a large degree in national conversation, and we helped provide some guidance about the development of the solar industry in the United States. Of course, other things hugely built on top of that, but we definitely built a bit of a local industry for it. The biomass plant, much maligned, puts dollars into our local regional community and, and lets those landowners be whole because they have a product they can sell to us. It is a good thing. The contract may have been bad. The buyout may have been a unnecessary medicine that we did not want to take, but it was a good thing to not be blowing up mountain tops in West Virginia and hauling coal from there to us. It was a good thing to not be taking fossil fuels out of the ground and putting them into the atmosphere. We do good things in this city. We have. It started long before me. It started long before all of us. In this community, we have, we have made all types of people feel welcome here. We have committed to nondiscrimination, to equity and to equality. We have committed to environmental justice, racial justice, economic justice. We have treated our budgets as moral documents. We have worked on the edge, the, the leading edge of how we police in our community so that it is fair and safe for everyone. We have a University of Florida who, hey, if we could, if we could tax them on SEC champion chips, we could get ourselves out of trouble. But we can't. We have a community college that has set the bar nationwide, and that's a, that is a, a journey that they have got, that we have been a part of. We have done great things in this city. We do it every day. Our community builders, our staff do it every day. Our charter, charter officers oversee staffs that, that truly make a difference in the lives of people who live in Gainesville, whether those people are here for school, whether they're here for medical care, they retire here, whether they're born here. They make a difference. We make a difference. And so I want to make sure as we go forward, some of this may be a little doom and gloom, but that we, that we remember our successes, because that's, I know that's why I wake up every day, and that's why I come here, is the things that we've done well and that we can continue to do well and maybe even do better. Partially, I believe this is something that we have to do better on. It was on my mind as soon as I came onto the commission. It was on my mind while I ran. It was on my mind while I ran. I certainly didn't tell someone, oh, I'm going to, I'm going to reduce GRU rates as some sort of just promise that I can make without looking at the full budget. I know that I was aware, and I made sure to not overpromise. I hope that we, I hope I have not overpromised to anybody. I hope that the default decisions that we have coming before us, we look at very carefully. I hope we're courageous when we look at those. I hope we don't continue to have our pet projects that we lard onto a budget, but then say we don't want to, oh, I don't want to vote for a GRU rate increase. Oh, I, I don't know if I want to raise a millage on a budget that we have personally larded. I challenge all of us to not be that kind of a legislator. I challenge myself to not be that kind of a legislator. I also challenge the community, as they come, come with us on this journey, to not be that kind of a community that, that protects their little, their little pet project at the expense of everyone else in the community, particularly the people who already have enough in this community, the haves, the housing haves, the housing have-nots, the, they need help. The, the people who can clearly afford to pay their utility bills, their pet projects might have to come under the knife to make sure that people who can't pay their utility bills, what, what might be described as pet projects of those, those are survival projects for them. So I hope, I challenge us, I challenge our community. Obviously, chap, staff will be challenged by all of this, but I challenge us to make sure that we're the best of ourselves, the best as legislators and commissioners as we go forward, and that, and that we always remember what we have done, what we or others have done really well in the past, take it as a point of pride, so as we go forward, we make sure that we're building a Gainesville that is worthy of living in, particularly for the people who don't always have everything they need. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I conclude.
Thank you, Commissioner Willis. I appreciate that. Appreciate what you said, not that you concluded. We're about to wrap up here. I, I want to, to thank everyone. I did want to mention some things, going back to the payment in lieu of taxes concept at UF, just some, some things to consider in the process. It is true that we do have a really good partnership with UF on, on something that we kind of forget about, and that is RTS. We don't get the kind of system that we have for RTS without that partnership, and it is, that's a big deal, and I don't want to set to overlook that. But our, to speak to the things that, that are a consequence of having an excellent, very large university in our community, our roads get used at a heavier pace than would otherwise be used. Our, our police provide backup at the emergency room and a variety of other places. Our fire services certainly are used on campus. We provide the hazmat opportunities, as I recall, for everything, every hazmat need on, on campus. Folks who are, and beyond, yes, but folks who, who live on campus in dorms aren't contributing to the tax base otherwise. So there, there absolutely are specific things that, that are part of, of the impact of the university that I don't want us to forget about. And that's not in any way to pick a fight with the university. I see the world through orange and blue glasses. I, I love UF, but, but it is a conversation worth having, and we must have it. This is the very best opportunity to have that. So I'm going to go back to Commissioner Book. Yes, sir.
My only comment, Mr. Mayor, was if we had any, the state delegation, the J-LAC or our local delegation online, they may want to say something based on our discussion here before we close.
Representative Caruso, I can't see who else might be with us. Did you want to make some comments?
I just wanted to say thank everyone, I wanted to thank everyone for coming out today and, you know, recognizing the severity of the issues here. I, as I mentioned in the, my opening comments, I was concerned that we wouldn't be looking at, you know, bold actions, and, and I think you've done that today. I, I heard a lot of things that were, were pleasing, and I think, you know, could, could be a resolution of, of the issues facing Gainesville and the GRU. So I'm, I'm encouraged. I look forward to joining you on the next workshop. I don't know when that'll be, but hopefully it'll be soon. And I appreciate every, everybody, all the commissioners and the public's input and the city managers' input on, on this matter, and thanks staff for their hard work also behind the scenes. So, and thank you, Mayor, for your leadership in, in dealing with this issue.
Thank you, Chair Caruso, and we will certainly be in touch and make sure you have our, our schedule for moving forward. Seeing no more lights, I'm going to go ahead and close this item out and ask for member comment. Okay, no more member comment. Thank you all so much for being here, staff, community, and my, my colleagues. We are adjourned.